Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming out in this freezing cold weather to come to this fun and stuff meeting tonight. It should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Therefore, we've had considerable opportunity to study and ask questions, make sure everything's clear. The Board will hold their next regular meeting Tuesday, December 16th, right in here again in the Woodbridge School Library. Guests and participants are asked to silence your cell phones and put them away during the duration of the meeting. Mr. Morehouse.
Mrs. Lemon?
Here.
Mrs. Effman?
Here.
Mr. Carlow?
Here.
Mr. Lyman?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here. You stand with me for pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, unuttered, in the resolve of liberty, justice for all. Okay. Now, public participation, did you give any, anything? I'll tell you what it's about, just in case you have something for later. We have two times you can address the board. The public is invited to speak at this time. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, and no one may speak more than once on the same topic. Comments also can be emailed to comments@woodbridge.k12.oh.us during the meeting. Any discussion of school employees must be conducted in executive session for the Board of Education Bylaw, Section 169.1. And you would have had to turn in a piece of paper with your info before you speak. So, without will, continue on. Approval of the agenda, I will move. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mrs. Perry?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
I'm Karen. Superintendent?
So, I know that I already shared this with you about Timber Top and my board report, but I just wanted to talk a little bit more about it and see if you had any questions. So, we're cautiously optimistic that this is going to be a fix for our families, but they're rebranding. So, A.I.Y. is no longer the property management company. Now, it's Morgan Properties, no relation to Mr. Morgan.
Okay.
And already, they really, you know, they've reached out to ours. They've been really communicative. And M. Trail Bridge, which was a connector from the bottom part of Canyon Brook that has been out for a while, is now under repair, and we're hoping to have that finished proceeding. So, although it doesn't provide the same relief that having the access road being repaired, it will make moving around a little bit easier. They're also having some discussions about whether buying those of their parcels, if the owner would be willing to sell. And then that could be a possibility, maybe to fix that road off of North Hampton. So, some good discussion. And, you know, they definitely want to work with us. They know that the winter season is coming, and we're concerned about our families, we have a hundred, and thirty-one students that live just in the Canyon Brook area. So, we are communicating with those families specifically, letting them know on inclement weather days that we might have a delay. We're not going to do the alternate stop. We tried to put that in place last year, and it just, it wasn't safe because there's not a sidewalk, and not everybody was able to get a ride up that hill. So, I'm going to use that our whole district is open, we may have to delay, and we'll communicate via stop phone or email and all call, just to let them know what's happening.
I'm really proud of our community being so patient. This has been going on for a long time, so I'm really proud that they worked with us so well and understood.
Yeah, we're continuing with the county and the city on it, and so we'll let you know as more, what develops from that.
Now, we got some recognition, or you haven't done that?
I haven't done that. I'm talking a lot. I want to just talk about Nick Neer for just a little bit. So, he was recently named the Athletic Director of the Year by the Ohio International Athletic Administrators Association, and we had to go down to Columbus and celebrate him. And Nick is positive, and he has energy, and his demeanor just makes it seem like the hard work is effortless that he does. You can't have a bad day when you're around Nick. And I think that's just a show sign of someone who's putting in the time, the care behind the scenes. And culture really matters to Nick. He makes sure there's no question about the athletic environment we have in place for our students. And also, he puts Woodbridge on the map as one of the leader. It is not just within our conference, but state kind of reach out to Nick, letting him know what he's doing here, what programs we offer. And I think that's really great for a district small like ours. We are a place that more people want to follow. So, just wanted to congratulate him and just show how grateful I am that he's on our team. All right, and then I'm going to invite Mrs. Harrington up, so she could recommend us some of our elementary students.
Absolutely. And we are so happy we have two of our core students, and so I don't know if we're going to trickle in later when we meet up today. They all said they were. But I'm very excited. And what I did was I asked our title small group instructors to give me a recommendation. Our focus on literacy at the elementary school is intense, and we feel like that clock is ticking, and we feel a tremendous pressure. But with the help of UFLI and our title small group instructors, it's been tremendous to see the growth our students are showing. And so, I asked the title small group instructors, "Tell me one student who is knocking it out of the park in their reading group." And so, I have four students that I'd like to share with you today. And today, that's Isabella, Isabella Kerber and Charandre. And so, when I asked their small group instructors specifically, Mrs. Brown is to recognize Charandre, and one thing that she said to me is that the thing that she's the most proud of him is his tenacious hard work. She said that he works and works and works, and is so focused no matter what is going on around him. And that's really hard. He's a fourth grader, and it's harder to, especially when you have a lot of distractions socially, and you have a lot of other things going on, but he gives it his best every single day, and his growth has been tremendous. And he, today when we talked, he had some things he wanted to say, but he wasn't sure if he would be able to say it.
Sure he can.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then come up and shake our hands, you can tell us.
Okay. Well, and one of the things he said to me that he really likes to remember, we said that one, hard work. Do you remember that word that you used when we were talking about learning hard words? What's the thing that you liked about that?
Challenging.
The challenge. He said, "I love the challenge of learning really big hard words." I was like, "Wow, that's great." People don't like those things. That's really good. So, we're so proud of you. And then Isabella, Isabella also wanted to make sure that, she also has cards, she wrote some cards. And she said to me when I picked her up today, she said, "I have thank you cards, and I'll be delivering them." And I said, "Well, that is so great." She was so excited to talk to us about reading. So, Isabella, do you want to talk about? Go. How about a layout? What do you remember, the two things we talked about in your reading group? The two things that you really liked that make reading groups so much fun?
All the people that were being so kind in our reading group, and effort that were, that was really easy to remember.
That's right. And so, she said she loves the kids in her group, and she loves her reading group teacher. That's the thing that she loves, going to reading groups every day. And when I asked her, I said, "Is that very easy?" She goes, "It is so easy." I'm like, "Oh, boy, we maybe need to work on that." But that is awesome, because her students, especially students who are in second grade, if they have the sense that it's easy, accessible, that they can, then they never give up. And Isabella's attitude about reading is a testament, and her growth is a result of that also. So, I am so proud of them. The other two students that are not here are Prince and Isaiah. And Prince, one of the things that he said to me is he loves practicing. He loves practicing at home, he loves reading at home, he loves the field little sheets that they get to do. Someone call me. Yeah. Yes, this is Isaiah. That's awesome. This is perfect. Hi, Isaiah, come look at that. This is perfect timing, literally perfect, without any doubt completely. This is excellent, so proud of you. Okay, so I was just getting to know about how proud I am of you, and how good you've done, and how excited your reading teachers were. And do you remember that part we talked about, maybe having a chance to talk? Okay, so that's coming up in my three seconds. So, one of the things that Isaiah's reading teacher, and he was nominated by Mrs. Beekey, she said that he, that he is such a hard worker. Oh, I'm sorry, I just made a mistake, that Faith Blazes is who, is who nominated. And she said that he came to mine immediately, because not only is he working so hard, but his attitude and joy for learning is contagious. And I thought that was such a nice thing. Okay, so, Isaiah. Do you remember what you said, you wanted to share with the group about reading? Would you like me to read one? Maybe we can work on that together. So, that's really a wonderful message.
I love my reading because they're so nice, and I love my teacher because she is the nicest person I could ever have. And she, and I love the reading group because I love how we can do the speech of spending time with our group.
And he said, the thing that I love too, is he said, "My teacher worked so hard every single day." And I thought, "Oh, my gosh," to be able to recognize that as an elementary student is really a testament. So, we're so proud of Isaiah too, and we're so glad that he's at Woodbridge, this is his first year with us, and we're so happy he's here. And so, really, it's a testament not only to the students, to the families, thank you for all of your support at home, it's a lot, for reading every day, and that sort of giving that, that focus, it's amazing. But also that, that idea of targeted intervention and instruction, but also that they're like personal success and the way that they're feeling about school is really a great part of the Woodbridge way. So, thank you very much, and I'm so proud of you guys.
So, we're going to shake some hands and then do a picture of fun. So, do you want to come on up? You can just go, go around the table, or we can apply.
We didn't practice the handshake.
Okay.
All right, ready, Isaiah, lead the way. Here we go. Like a train, here we go. Great job. Says, "Smile nice." Congratulations again, guys. Thank you, guys.
Just one more thing. I'm just going to, she would, one more thing. So, the handouts or the information you have, the rest to issue, the Bible, and then also the WEA contract, so it is definitely a leader manual to receive. There was a lot of housekeeping items and just back and forth, and I'm not sure we had it right. It's also thicker, not because there's a ton of new language, but because the OTES 2.0, which you can get it online, but then also some people like to have it in print. So, that information, which is directly from the state, is just in the back. So, that's why it's thicker. And the board attorney filed it with the state, so we are, we are official, official now. And that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Morehouse, treasures report.
So, I have a myriad of things to kind of go through this panel, but I will try not to be too long. As far as the financials for last month, our general fund was down for the month of October, but it was actually for a good reason. The most of the backup that we usually get from the state actually came on September 30th instead of in the month of October, so we got a day early. So, Septembers were higher, but it just made Octobers down a little bit. I'd like to give a shout out to two of our employees, Kelly Gish and Ted Rander, for receiving and having funded a couple of donors' choice grants. As far as legislation, there was a review piece that came out last week that I had not seen. It's on the governor's desk to be signed, Hospital 124. What Hospital 124 will do is actually, I mean, help constituents overall, is what it's doing is, so if you recall back to 2023, the state came out to counties and said, "Everyone's going to be, that property value is going to increase 30% on average, everyone must do that." The county spotted, and the state said, "No, you need to reflect more of what properties we're selling during COVID." We all know what the price of homes did during COVID. Well, now, the state agrees what the county gives them on the avenue, so it's really kind of got to be up to the county, because who knows our areas better than the county instead of the state? So, it's actually a good way. I think this will help people better, and again, if we would have had it in place a few years ago, it would have been very nice, because we wouldn't be in a situation right now with what legislation is trying to do, I think, if this would have been in effect. So, and I also know that one of the things that there's a group, is everyone knows grassroots effort to try and get rid of all property taxes. So, and they're trying to get on signatures, get on about next November, and the issue is that if that doesn't work November, and come January, there's no more property taxes, what's the state going to do? Because it's not just schools we're talking about, counties, villages, anybody, zoos, libraries, everything. So, if they start looking at some things, and if they had to replace it with something else, they're looking at right now an income tax that would increase by 10% to the state of Ohio. If they replace it with a sales tax, they would increase it by over 17% on the, on what the state of Ohio have to charge for sales tax. So, there's really no other way to, you know, because it's, no one wants to pay property taxes, but money's got to be generated somewhere. So, I just, you know, heard some of those numbers this last week. One good thing that, that came to us last week, so we purchase our gas, we, from Enbridge through Ohio High School Council, and Enbridge, for the first time in a number of years, tried to eventually increase the rates, but also eliminate what's called the school transportation rate. And we actually, schools have gotten a cheaper rate, and the transportation is just moving the gas along pipes, you know? It's not like their trucks bring us gas around, and it's just a transportation fee that everyone has to pay. They tried to get rid of that school transportation fee. So, Ohio High School Council, on all, on behalf of all their members, went to the Public Attorney Commission and Enbridge themselves, and explained why this is so beneficial to us and we really do it. And they also brought up the fact that Columbia still has this. So, they not only agreed to institute it, but we're going to get a 9% decrease of what we could have done. So, I just, I appreciate what Ohio High School Council did on everyone's behalf. The only, last thing I have, and I didn't really plan on saying anything until Mrs. Osso started talking about Mr. Mayor, there's one thing I'd like to say that I don't know if anyone always realizes, but under G2, which there's been three other people that have become athletic directors at other schools. So, it's really kind of a neat thing. He's not only helping our schools, but he's helping student athletes all over the state of Ohio. And I just think for him to be able to train three people to live all like that, it's really kind of a cool thing. And I would be still, I'm not, but Mrs. Osso talked about it, but I just, you know, since we're talking about Nick, I just, I appreciate what he's done for good. I suppose that's all I have for Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, I didn't see that there, but now I can.
Okay, it's recommended. Board for the treasures report as presented. Do I have a motion?
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lemon?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Carlow?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Okay, well, I was going to read this, and I'll read it anyway, that our kids and their parents have already left. What we like to do is we want to try and rethink talking with people to stay till we officially tell them to go, because we think it's really important for everybody to hear the treasures report with all the stuff going on. So, anyway, before we continue with our meeting, I would take a, I would like to take a moment to, again, congratulate all of our students and their families. We know how busy life can be, and we completely understand that you may have other plans to get to this evening. Of course, you're always welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but this time, we'll take a brief five-minute recess to allow anyone who would like to head out to do so. Thank you again for being here tonight and for representing Woodbridge so well. So, it's official now, if anybody needs to go, go ahead on. Okay. So, do we need a break? Is everybody good? Good? Okay. All right. Board of Education reports. We are scheduled to have a O.C. meeting December 2nd, Marlene and I, so that's in works. Anybody else have any committee reports or?
There was a long committee meeting today, but I don't know, like, where did you go? I couldn't go, I had a mammogram, so I was not able to go, but.
Well, you know, they still have them, which I was on it last time, so then I looked and I saw you guys were on, but if ever you can't go, just give me a shout, and if I can go off, I'll go off, because I have a couple of things I want to offer them. I don't know what going's on, they're going to have, but yeah, let me know. I'll be, I'll be glad to go.
Okay.
Maybe I'll check with her and see what's going on and see if I can add some little presents for whatever they're doing. Okay.
I just want, I thought we'll be contacting the record retention committee, we will have to have a meeting in December, so I'll be scheduling that.
Oh, okay.
Usually, we do it traditionally, right, before the summer meeting.
Oh, okay, good. That might give you a chance to have a, a little executive session with the year after that. Is it a full types of meeting?
The record retention committee?
Yeah.
No, it's just.
Oh, okay. Let's just.
Who's on that?
Board President, Superintendent, Treasurers Department.
Is that on a list?
No, it's, no, that's official committee. It's not a, it's not a nominated by law.
Okay.
So, it's, it's in a harder base code.
Okay. All right, you can do that then. All right, so.
Just a quick update from the legislative committee side of things. We had a meeting while we were in OSBA, with a group of other school districts. It's actually working to bring more school districts into conversations about what's happening and, and do some community building. So, we have about 27 people there, and I think seven districts for everyone. So, a number of new people, which is good, so it's going to keep growing and see where it goes.
And if I, if I might inject, I thought that the, the way it was set up and everything was awesome, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I'm really proud of the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
A little scary at first.
Okay, well, I will move to approve the consent resolution.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Personnel, certificated staff. Do I have a motion?
A second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm really, I just want an item to highlight, because this is new, so the CCP, we, we got a letter in the summer that there was an incentive that we received, so we didn't know that it was something that was going to be offered. We don't know if it's going to come back, but we had two courses, or two CCP courses that were offered through our CTE program that James Gillingham teaches. And so, because of that, there was a, you know, an amount provided to him for that work, and then also maybe that goes back into the program. So, really exciting. It would be great if we could continue receiving that in the future, but at this point, we don't know if, if that will or not.
Okay.
It was an actual good surprise for the state.
Yeah, there you go.
One of the classes. It was Bio 101 and Chem 123, part of the biotech program.
Okay, number seven, personnel. A, we have certificated staff one through three. I will move.
I'll second.
We already had a motion, a second on that.
You did? What'd you do, interrupt? All right, any other discussion? Okay, no roll call.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlow?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Okay. Now, B, classified staff, we have one through 11.
I'll move.
A second.
Discussion.
So, just a couple items to highlight. The first three are resignations due to retirement, and so we were thinking, since it's mid-year, that at the December board meeting, we would just, just do a little celebration for them. And December or January, we were just thinking about like a mid-year recognition for them. And then six through nine are moves that we made where we didn't do postings for each one. So, we talked with O.C., and made sure it was okay with them, but because of all of the domino effect of one person leaving, we had just made some different assignments, based on, we looked at seniority, whether or not they passed the exam that was given. And then, then we, of course, had a conversation with everybody to make sure everybody was, understood the moves and what was going to happen. So, we were able to execute that a lot faster than going through an individual posting for each position.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Carlow?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Supplemental, we have one through four.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Only one item here, and that's Jeff Howard. So, this is something that he's been doing for a number of years in district and during negotiations, and it was, you know, agreed to add it as a supplemental, just because of all the work that he's doing. And it is a sport that he's coaching during the offseason, and they're competing, and it's great for our kids to be a part of.
Yeah. Nice. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlow?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
D, we have van drivers. I will move.
A second.
Discussion. Hey, roll call, please.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mr. Carlow?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Um, game helpers.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
So, I know that these are our coaches, and we don't often also sign them up for game helpers, but we hosted a district fringles for volleyball, and OHSSA provides us money to pay for these, the game helpers, the coaches, to help out with that event. And it's good for us because they know the kids, and, and obviously, they know our district and the space, so that's what we did there.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bev?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effman?
Aye.
Mr. Carlow?
Aye.
Mr. Lyman?
Aye.
Okay, B, Woodbridge High School Science Design Build Resolution. I will move.
A second.
Discussion.
I am so excited about this recommendation. So, I'm going to, I'm making this recommendation on behalf of our selection committee that included Tammy, Tom, Joel, Vinnie, Elle participated in it too, and it was, it was, we had some really great firms that presented. The one that we're recommending is Regency, and it's because they had a clear plan, they understood our budget, they were able to provide examples within that budget to also give us some specific examples of changes that they may foresee.
give us some specific examples of changes that they may foresee. And then also we've had experience with them too, so they were really knowledgeable about our team and the district, the importance of safety for the workers that would be coming in. And so we just, we feel that that was, they were the best out of the different firms that we interviewed.
Absolutely, I agree. Yeah.
The entire process of the design build, so you advertised in the paper a couple times, and firms can submit proposals and so forth and they request some information. We had eight firms actually request information on what we were looking at. Only free return, because some of the ones, it's a $1.2 million project, but some of the firms out there, they want something bigger. So some of them didn't return, some just wasn't a good fit for what they were looking at. So we were happy with three firms and then as the proposals came in at the last minute, one of the firms declined. It was something they'd never gotten into, they really wanted to, and we were, you know, we wanted to talk to them, but they just decided it wasn't for them. So we did interview the two firms and there's a legal scoring process you have to go through and obviously we worked with our attorney how to do it. And it came out, Regency by far was, you know, either firms could have, would have done a good job for us, but like Mrs. Beatty said, Regency just understood what we were looking at, understands our district and they just really came out on top. I will also say there were four other companies that requested information, two revenue firms, Builders Exchange and a company called Dodge Reports that I actually used to work with back in college. They get the information out there and that's how some of the firms find out about these things. And then there were also two subcontractors that requested information because they want the work as subcontractors. So they want to know not only the job, but who got it, who's bidding on it, all kinds of stuff. So it was, it was a little bit interesting. I've never had that, the outside organizations request information.
Quite involved.
It is. I meant to bring my binder because my binder is like this, I don't know, documentation we have for it, but held it in the office unfortunately.
I wanted to read that.
You couldn't be allowed to do that.
Just kidding. Okay, anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mrs. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Let's just see. MOU with Akron Public School for Title I Services, Faith Islamic Academy. A second. Discussion.
Excuse me. So Faith Islamic is a credit school in our district and they automatically qualify for Title I funds to run grants and with a fiscal agent for their Title I monies. But they also qualify for Title I monies with Akron Public Schools, Crowe Falls Schools, Stowe, they have a number of different districts. So Crowe Falls, Akron, Woodbridge and Stowe are, they're putting their money with Akron, they'll be a fiscal agent and they're going to employ tutors for them. And this just is a member of understanding to Iowa's to spend the money to Akron, let them employ the people. It's just a, it's a nice thing that we don't have to worry about dealing with that and then Akron Public can take care of everything and we just pay the money. But it's, it's a legal right that they have for this money, even though they're not at Woodbridge.
Thank you for that explanation. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Beatty?
Aye.
Mrs. Beatty?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Beatty?
Aye.
Mrs. Beatty?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Let's just finance. A purchase order, we have one, two, three, four.
I'll move.
A second.
Morehouse.
Well, unfortunately I have to bring these to you and I apologize. We had a couple of issues and I take full blame for this. Healthcare Building Services, this is one I traditionally bring to you because what happens is some of our staff work with Medicaid eligible students and we get reimbursed money and we have to do a cost report and we never know what that cost report is going to come in. And we have, percentage of the money that we get goes to healthcare building services for developing this cost report. We received, I want to say $130,000 from Fiscal Year 24, so this is what it's based on. So I never know truly what we're going to have to pay until we get the money. So it's not in place at the time of services, is why I have to bring it to you for official proof. Southern Academy Educational Service Center, they have staff that does things for us and this was totally my fault. I thought we had purchasers in place. We did not. So for the first couple of months, we had to go back and do a special purchaser, so I'm asking you to approve this. Scott Screeman is one of our training firms that helps us out with a lot and bottom line is I didn't have nearly enough encumbered for our negotiations. We did negotiations with both OPEC and WA last spring and when everything started coming in, we just didn't have enough covered, so I need to ask you for this approval. And then last one, HPS, that is for food service, the H actually stands for hospital, but food service departments use it. I don't know why, but it's, it took me a long time to figure out what HPS stood for because none of them do. But they, we, it's basically a fall purchasing program and they do other things for us as well, but by paying this service to them, this membership to them, we're able to get discounted rates on some different things and it's actually, it's very good for our program. You know, like Mr. Beatty and I were talking, you can see what our food service has been doing for the past number of years under the tutelage from Platonic and Tina. So again, I ask you just to approve this, this membership for them because it just, yeah, it wasn't in place.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, do we have a motion? A second? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page.